Go ahead and call the meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Do you not have any proposed agenda adjustments? Does anybody else have a request for an agenda adjustment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the minutes. I would make a motion to approve the minutes of February 7th as presented. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion or corrections? Okay, we're all present, so we can vote by hand. All those in favor? That's as five to zero. Next up is warrants. I would make a motion to approve regular warrant seventeen, payroll warrant seventeen, and ban warrant thirty-three. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor? That's as five to zero. Next up is public comments. Do we have anybody who would like to speak? Not seeing anybody. We'll go ahead and move on. Acknowledgements. I know lots of exciting sports teams rocking out their season. I imagine we'll hear some of that. But congratulations to all the sports teams. I recently heard a piece on NPR. This one was about principals instead of teachers, talking about the high rate of departure from the profession of principals. But of course, that applies to teachers as well and continuing to talk about just, you know, enormous amount of needs in students. I don't know how much COVID revealed existing needs and how much it created new needs, but there's clearly, you know, a deep set of challenges and just, you know, to our teachers and our principals and administrators, I'm grateful. I know it remains a challenging time to be in the schools and I'm very grateful for everybody who's here with our students.
I could build off that actually with two things. One, I wanted to do a shout out to Carrie Wyman who participated. It was a WGS event on campus with other local leaders, leaders in K through 12 education, talking about gender and leadership in K through 12. It was well attended. I know a number of my students went and were really engaged. So I'm very proud to have a principal like that. And then I also heard from Nick's who's nine years old and this is Gani's class that our very own Ms. Diamond went down to read to that class today. And Nick's reports that Principal Diamond has the most amazing voices when reading. So that's a talent that I wasn't aware of and want to acknowledge.
Rachel.
No. What did you say with that?
Martin.
Well, since it's not the time of the month for principals to report, I get the great honor of reporting on a couple of exciting accomplishments recently from teams at the middle school just before vacation. Our basketball teams were in the PBML playoffs and our girls team made it to the championship game. They emphasized that meant that they were runner up and played really hard. It was a great accomplishment to get to the championship game. And then in high school sports over the break, our Nordic skiers competed up in Fort Kent for a couple of days and Ruth White came away as an individual state champion and Clara White finished in second. And Megan Berry also was a fifth place finisher. So on the podium, we had three of the five finalists. So as a team, they were the runner up in that competition. And then, as has been much reported, our boys varsity team won the Northern Maine championship on Saturday in exciting fashion. And we'll be playing the state championship game next Saturday. So that's really exciting for for them and just for the school community with all the people that turn out and it's really a fun event. We also had some individual athletes that were announced, I think last night or this morning. Pierce Walston was named the MVP for the class B all tournament team. And Pierce, along with Ben Francis and Will Francis, were named first team for the all tournament class B team. So congratulations to all of the athletes on their accomplishments.
We're not twins despite what the media is.
Yeah, I didn't read the article. I just saw that. Yeah, they're not. So exciting, exciting times and you know, we also have our some big arts performances coming up. Lots of things happening. Show part goes and competes at district competition tomorrow. One acts compete in a little over a week. And we have jazz festival coming up, just lots of, you know, times for our students to be able to showcase all the work they've been putting in and their respective activities and pursuits outside of the classroom.
Thanks. Go ahead and move on to reports. Lisa, you want to start?
Absolutely. Things, things are, have been extremely busy in special ed land. We continue to get kids moving in. It's, it's just, it's almost not surprising anymore. Staff is, is working very hard to just stay on top of things. We have, we're, I think we're short one ed tech at this point, but people are really banding together and and supporting each other. And there's a lot of support between programs. So some of the self-contained ed techs are supporting the resource room at different times and vice versa. And we're seeing that in all the schools. So I'm really pleased about that. Other than that, we're just working on end of the year local entitlement, inputting data for that. It was delayed because on their end with, with the new program they're using, they weren't ready for us to, to do that. So it's, it's pretty busy. We continue also to get referrals for social work. Again, I think I, we've been in school two days this week and I've received two more referrals. So more kids are getting put on the, on the waitlist, but we're working hard as far as our two social workers to kind of look at, you know, a triage system, looking at the kids with the highest needs and, and meeting those first and then, you know, looking at, at the level of need and, and just kind of prioritizing that way. But very pleased with, with all the work everyone is doing. So any questions?
What question? No, thank you. And Susan?
Good evening. So much of my written report focused on the course of requests for next year. And I know that's later on in the agenda, so I won't belabor that point, but there's information in the written report about the process that those go through with teachers recognizing needs and then moving forward to principals, myself and, and then Superintendent Higgins before getting input from the curriculum committee and then coming to the, to the board. So there's quite the process that those courses go through. And we have way more than typical years this year, but are also pleased with how our teachers are thinking about different ways and different pathways to meet the students' needs. Lots going on in the realm of professional development. Next week on Wednesday is an early release day, finishing the third in the rotation with Wabanaki Studies, Technology, and the required childhood sex abuse training. And then March 17th is a full district day focused mostly on culturally competent curriculum in the morning and then some breakout sessions with DEI topics and staff wellness for the afternoon. Right now, there's two sets of, two sessions with a breakout session. And we have eight presenters for each of those two sessions. So nice variety of staff, I think, to, to pick from. And then curriculum work is happening too. I appreciate Carrie and Manny's creative thinking and getting some curriculum work done during staff meeting time. So we met with the ASA staff on some health curriculum work for the second time at the staff meeting today and have lots planned and upcoming dates for math work at ASA as well as the middle school, meeting with Heather Holmes next week to figure out some times and ways to finish up things in math at the high school. Health curriculum is, is coming along as well. So lots going on.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? We'll go ahead and move to Superintendent Report.
The main thing I wanted to update you on, it's not something we're covering in the rest of the meeting, is just update you on the planning I've been doing around the strategic planning process. So with the help of the administrative team, I have a list of potential candidates that I'm reaching out to beginning this week for to fill some of the stakeholder roles on the committee. And we hope to have a committee formed in a couple of weeks. And, and then begin with a, you know, a meeting hopefully later in March, early April to keep things out. One of the things that we also did just before break was begin to formulate what the data profile might look like that we are proposing to put together to share kind of this is the state of the district as really a first point of discussion and exploration for the strategic planning committee. So really, when we put that together, it'll be a really robust data picture for our district. So that's going to be a pretty heavy lift to pull together, but in the end, I think it'll be a really valuable collection of information for us to have compiled in one place. So that's really where we are. And we haven't talked about it in a meeting or so, but we've been thinking about it and working on it alongside everything else going on. But, you know, trying to stay on track with what we talked about in terms of timeline and and in terms of the committee membership. So more to come about that. Other than that, I think everything else that I think that you talked about.
Okay. Any questions or follow? So on to the budget.
Yes. So we have some documents that are in your board folder. They are, Rachel, are these on the website as well?
I think.
Sorry, they, the, the, no, the, the budget documents aren't on the website. Okay.
Are they in the folder?
They're in your folder.
I mean, that's.
Oh, in, in your, in your folder folder. So I will share my screen so that everyone can see this. So this is the first, the documents that we typically use are the same ones we put together for tonight. I'd like to start just by a quick summary. Last time we talked a bit about the revenue picture as it was shaping up from the state allocation that we received in late January. So we'll come back to that in a second. But just to reiterate, I know Brian shared a kind of a written summary of what he was going through verbally last meeting of the state revenue. Do not have. I have an extra set, I'm sure of it. The state revenue picture, can you come get this for me?
I, I have.
I know, but, oh, you have an extra? Yeah. I have. The state revenue increase was seventy-seven thousand and the increased local requirements of two hundred and sixty-five thousand are certainly, you know, what we would categorize in the, you know, not great news section of the story. But it's our starting point and it's something that, you know, we built in, but we're, we're looking at tonight. So to begin with, we go down typically cost center by cost center. Remember the cost centers are the big buttons for which budget is built and reported on. And what we typically do is show what the big impacts we're seeing for changes in that cost center for both, you know, adds or deducts from, from the budget from year to year. And as you, you know, probably know and can observe just from these numbers, the regular ed cost center is by far the largest. And then the next largest is the special education cost center. So those two cost centers alone make up over half of our budget. So they're, you know, the most impactful cost centers in the budget. And several years ago, we started because it's just easier to get a big picture of putting all of the salary and benefit change impact at the very bottom of the document. So you can see at the bottom of this document, rather than breaking it out in regular ed, special ed, you know, support services, all of the different areas, we just show in one area where we have calculated all the salary and benefit increases that are in the budget. So you can see that here. It's a very sizable number. And when you consider that, you know, our overall budget increase that is in the budget right now is just over a million and this number is, you know, five hundred thousand, it, it really starts us out behind a bit, right? In terms of impacts that we could have to reduce the overall burden of, of local tax increase. So the five hundred thousand is the starting point. With that is the 10% that we have built in for a health insurance increase as typical. We will learn about what the actual increase is in early April. And we do make that change in the budget once we learn what that is. And it's just hard to know. So we typically build in anywhere between eight and 10. And this year with just inflation, we're just not sure what to expect with insurance costs. Last year we had zero increase. It's the first time since I've been here though, that we've had zero percent increase. And so, you know, it'd be wonderful to get that again. And then we would have savings we could pull out of the budget.
So thank you. You're doing a really nice job explaining this, especially to me. Just so I understand, the five hundred and one thousand under the other data, is that part of or not part of the increase in, in the one million forty-six thousand dollars?
It is.
So, so half of that increase is due to salary and benefit increases.
Yes. Yes. Good clarified question. Glad you asked that. We just don't break it out across all the cost centers because I think it's more helpful just to see the overall impact of that. So kind of back up to the top, we reference salary increases and benefit increases in each cost center, but we summarize them at the bottom instead of giving numbers in each. So going through each cost center, you see that the regular cost center is up three hundred and eighteen thousand overall compared to last year. And, you know, there are some increases and some decreases that are factoring into that. You can see those listed there. We did reduce the course teacher position in the budget back down to half time teacher because that's the teacher we have hired. As you recall, that was changed at the budget meeting last year. We didn't end up needing to hire a full-time teacher. So that's a deduct. I think I'll talk about the deducts first and then go back through the ads. The other two red lines you see there, there was a decrease in book lines and mainly that was due to middle school last year had a large planned purchase or this year of math textbooks that they, we since decided not to order. But because they don't have another large budget, our book budget plan for purchasing next year, we were able to take that out. So there were some increases in other cost centers, but there was a big deduct for middle school that caused good down. And then multi-program, there is a reduction there because last year we added a grade level. We added the sixth grade computers, which is what that middle school figure was, and we're not adding another grade this coming year. And last year we also had to add a few computers to the high school because our enrollment increased and we not projecting to need to do that next year. We are paying the last installment of our three-year payment plan of the large laptop purchase that we did. So that's something that, you know, we'll talk about when we begin to talk about our on the side of that balance, which is where we've been paying that. So in this cost center, you see the other lines are additions to the budget. The first one there is a proposal to add a halftime behavior coach at ASA. There is a proposed job description with your budget materials. It should be the last page in your budget materials that I wanted to provide because a lot of thought has gone into this position. I think this, sorry, do you have that, Mark? Okay, it's in this that I was. The, the position is really designed to help with behavioral interventions prior to special education placement or programming. But then also to support all teachers as they're working with students, whether they're in special education or not, to provide behavioral supports and supportive interventions just to that. As Lisa has talked about, you know, special education needs seem to ever be expanding. And this is one of the main areas where we're seeing a lot of growth and increased need. And one of the several things that are offsetting this a bit in the budget, there are two stipends that ASA is proposing that if we were to fill this position that they would propose, we eliminate that are shown down in the other instruction category. And then also one of the reasons that the administration felt like we could move from four classes to three classes in a more successful way with that second grade cohort next year is if we had some behavior support in this, in this fashion because you may remember on the enrollment data, you probably don't remember, but I'll remind you that that grade has a significant number of special education students for the size of that grade. And there are a lot of behavioral needs in that number. And so just, you know, we could talk more about that, but that's kind of the, the big picture view of this and it's a hard thing in this budget picture to be proposing positions. But this is one that, you know, I feel like has real merit and, and, and a lot of reasons to give it strong consideration. And so the job description is just, you know, for you to get to know our thinking and what we have in mind when we talk about this position. So the next two are both from ESSER. You know, this is the last year that we are spending ESSER for personnel needs in summer school this current fiscal year. Everything left in ESSER after the school year is there to fund the HVAC upgrade project at ASA in the grade one, two wing. So anything that we are currently paying with ESSER either has to be reduced and eliminated, or we have to move them into the budget. So the high school has requested that we continue the ed tech interventionist that was created with ESSER funds at the high school. The middle and high school also would like to continue the summer school program that was expanded with ESSER funds to serve more students and have a real SEL and be able to offer services to more than just the few special education services who are, are students who qualify for services during the summer. We've seen a real benefit and a lot of people take, students taking advantage of that program and see what value in it. And that's a scaled down version of the program. From year one, it was kind of, you know, a really robust program. Last year we knew the funds were getting tighter. They scaled it back a bit and this version that is in the budget here is almost like what they did last summer with probably a few less bells and whistles, trying to preserve the program, but do it in the most cost-effective way to, to keep it moving along. The other, the next three staff course, staff training, supply lines are all just, you know, pulling together from all the cost center, all of the lines in that cost center that have staff courses and training lines. So there's some up and down we see across buildings. Some buildings are going up, some are going down. And with supplies, I think that one is the largest increase that we're seeing inflationary impacts. And also we actually have some schools that have larger increases than this, but middle school, again, I think had some reduction here. And so the other schools, larger increases were offset a bit by the middle school. But inflation is hitting, I mean, just paper, for example, is the highest I think we've ever seen it having to buy. And we buy a lot of paper you know, over the course of the year. So it's, it's all kinds of things though, that we just find costs. Last year when we went to order way higher than they were when we built a budget. So being, trying to be more realistic about what things are costing. And then we have some contingency increase built there as well. Any question about regular education? Before I move on?
I mean, sort of like maybe tangential, but related to the conversation about, so reducing the class size in that grade. So for the teachers, they just shift to different grade and like it's just their curriculum like that works.
So last year, our last couple meetings ago, or maybe it was last meeting, we talked about the enrollment. We have two things happening simultaneous simultaneously. So we have the fifth grade that's the last year of the, the class that has two teachers in it, moving to middle school. So there's no longer a grade with two, just two classroom teachers in it. And by reducing first grade into second down to three, it's kind of a net, you know, there's no loss, no gain over all the staff. Because that teacher will be absorbed into, you know, some teacher, you know, will move somewhere to take on. Now that we have three classes at every grade level as opposed to one with four and one with two, now they all have three except for the one that's also.
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering from the teachers. And that's pretty common to like shift grades in four years.
I mean, typically, most years there is a teacher that shifts in some way, whether it's because of something like this, or maybe sometimes it's because of either teacher request or administrative request. So it's fairly common.
With the, the behavior coach or is that the, that's the job description later on? So do, do we hope for then, I keep hearing from Lisa about turnover and being short-staffed. Do we think that this behavior coach can prevent some of the attrition that we're seeing especially ed? And then a follow-up question to that, is there any danger? I remember being on a bunch of hiring committees last summer with Lisa. It was a sort of thing where you interviewed somebody and they were pretty good. If you wanted to call them in the next 10 minutes. Because if you didn't, they already got two offers from somewhere, somewhere else. Is there any danger that if we find? Is there any danger that if we find somebody and we hire them half-time that they're looking for a job while they're here? And then, then we're having the same conversation next spring, looking for another behavior coach. Or is there any way to tie this into like an ed tech position or some other way to support the work that Lisa's doing at special education?
Um, so with your first question, I'm not sure that it addresses the in and out of ed techs. Um, it, it could. I think it um more can help address um probably all staff who are just needing more support in how to uh work with students with behavioral needs. Um, and you know, it there are some staff who have a lot of experience with that and there are other staff who don't, or there's some you know, student needs that are new that we haven't seen before, that, you know, are presenting new challenges that we really haven't seen before. So there are all kinds of things coming at us that are new and different. And um, you know, as you hire a new um, new staff, those staff members don't always have the experience uh with this, whether they be a tech or teacher. So I think um having more support can only be a help for staff retention, I think, overall. Not just for Lisa's staff, for, for all staff. Um, in terms of a halftime position, that's always a risk with a halftime position. Ideally, that type of position is something we can pair with something else so that, you know, that person can maybe be here full-time, but you know, for now, we're proposing it as a halftime position to see, you know, what, what we're able to find and how we're able to configure it with potentially other positions in the district. Um, so but yes, there, these are, this is a pretty specialized position uh that we're hoping to fill. So it, it takes a pretty specific set of that.
And that sounds like they'll be doing some instructional work or coaching with teachers?
Right, yeah. Um, model teaching, co-teaching, coaching, um, working with students as well. So um, I think it will look maybe similar to what a literacy coach does. I mean, they do all those things as well, you know, with teachers, their co-teaching. Their um meeting individually, um, with students, um, working in small group of students in classrooms. So the coaching model can be either, you know, on the academic math or literacy or this type of coach.
Anything you want to add, Lisa?
It really is from Carrie.
Oh, sorry, or Carrie.
But Lisa might have something to say as well.
Or anybody?
I, I was thinking that, you know, right now we have students that maybe being considered for referral, but this would be an awesome piece to add to our, our multi-tiered uh approach to, to services where they might not only need check-ins, check-outs, they might need a behavior plan and something, as Meredith is saying, some coaching uh for, for the teacher and it, and it might, and what we would hope is it would be a short-term thing that um, you know, you'd be able to, to mold the behavior into what you want, so it doesn't get to the point of uh requiring a special referrals. So that, that's personally my hope. Carrie, I'm not sure where you stand with that.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree with you, Lisa. I think that this position could really help intervene with regular education students before it moves to a point where maybe they're referred to special education. I also feel as though this position could really support our guidance programming, the number of students and how the social emotional needs manifest in our youngest learners tends to be in lots of behavioral ways. And right now we have a need that far surpasses what Lisa Earhart is able to um provide for three hundred plus students. That's a lot of students that she's trying to support um across the school day. So I'm really hoping this position would be supporting students intervening, but also helping teachers figure out in the moment um how to deal with some of those challenging behaviors around social emotional supports that students need in the regular classroom during, you know, regular instruction, whether it's a math lesson and, and someone's having big feelings about something. Um, there's um, there, there's a lot of ways this position will support across the school.
Thank you.
Any other questions about regular ed before we move on to the session? So I think we talked last time when we gave the big impact uh summary about um the, the need that Lisa's putting forward for an additional um classroom at the middle school for special education needs. Just looking at the, well, the middle school enrollment is lower next year overall, the special education enrollment is higher next year. And the need that we have coming in are just more known to us because we are moving a cohort up. It's had some um pretty specific services at the elementary school. Um, and so you see those uh, the, the special education teacher and this, the ed tech. Uh, those two positions are for setting up that third um special education classroom at the middle school. The um next two lines are similarly as in regular ed, we have a, a, a ed tech physician or core adult, our off-ed program that um we added the year, it was, we added it in twenty twenty. Um, and it was really designed to help us be able to expand services there uh to uh offer that program to a more diverse um population. And so we really feel like that's important to continue. Um, and then also there are some increased costs um for special education, summer school in Esser that we'd like to continue. It's really just all part of the um e- expansion that we did up here for middle and high school. Um, you can see that we've decreased our projection for out-of-district placements, um, just based on what was known when we're putting together the budget. We still have a buffer placement built in. Um, that's really a hard prediction to make. Um, and if something changes in the next six weeks, we may end up, you know, changing that number on you. If something, you know, becomes known to us in a new way that, that would cause us to change that. Um, the last thing that was from Esser here is that last half of the social worker. I think this was our strategy all along to do a gradual move over of that position. So we moved half of it with this fiscal year and moving half of it next fiscal year. I don't think we need to um review, you know, the need and, and how that position is being utilized. Lisa mentioned it in her report that, you know, we are maintaining a waitlist for social workers. Um, contracted services um, you know, are projected to go up next year. We're, you know, we're spending more money on, on psych, psych services, B C B A services. Um, those services um with the population needs that, that Lisa has referenced and I've referenced. We're seeing, you know, increased needs for those kinds of contracted services um in special education. Um, staff tuition lines requests are up. You know, we do ser- Lisa does survey of staff and that's based on, you know, what people are enrolled in and what they're saying they're planning on taking. Um, and again, because this is our other largest um customer, we have um can, some increased contingency there for next year. Any questions about those items? The other instruction category, um, this is where we have a, uh, really our co and extracurricular um activity and programs and a lot of stipends. So you can see there are um two stipends proposed to be removed and that's connected to if the behavior coach is in place. Um, we're seeing inflationary uh impacts on the cost of um officials and game workers. We learned of you know, cost increases in those areas and are showing that increase. We um are adding girls hockey into the budget. Last year it was um, it, we used the money that we had previously allocate, allocated for swimming for girls hockey. Um, and going into next year, we're trying to um get back into swimming because we have a cohort of students coming up who um are involved in that. And so we are proposing that we add the girls hockey in the budget now so that um, we can have both programs um funded. And there was just a larger national conference attendance last year by the athletic director that's not happening this year. So we're taking that out. That's fairly straightforward. Any questions then?
Oh, yeah. What's in game workers?
Oh, it should be officials and basing issue there. Yeah, sorry.
Which I don't know.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. The referees and stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, student staff support, that's uh kind of a combination of uh really a lot of other uh areas that are instructional areas. You see them listed there, technology, nurse guidance, slavery, curriculum and improvement of instruction. Um, so you see the items outlined there. It's um, you know, a lot of items or a number of items that are less than ten thousand each, but together, you know, impactful. Um, we need A E Ds replaced, our A E Ds are uh, well, we need our batteries replaced in some of our existing A E Ds and we need uh more coverage to add to more after we've done kind of an analysis of our plan. Um, we put in an allocation for uh D E E I and some data support. Um, we talked a little bit about this, I think, where, that we were looking at uh survey software. But we're leaving it kind of broad. We may, you know, that may look like someone to help us with the data collection. I think there was a good suggestion out of that committee to consider other options. So we just have a placeholder in there with that amount to help us fund uh that work. Um, we're proposing to do some um, to add security cameras in our sto- stairwells and there's a, a cabling part of that work there. And then there's a uh installation and equipment uh allocation down in um the facilities maintenance part. That's just a vulnerable part of campus and we need to expand our security system to cover that area. Um, you can see tech upgrades went down. That's just kind of, there's years that we are adding more things than others and this is a year where we're able to reduce that some. Um, at A S A, um, I think the guidance program is suggesting adding a new S E L curriculum. So you see that there um for three thousand dollars. Uh, we are bringing a Danielson training um to the area and we're hoping to fill all the seats except for the ones that we want for our staff. Danielson is the um model that we use for supervision evaluation of instructional staff. Um, and we are selling seats to other districts around us to fill the seats. But we do plan on having our staff attend and we've built in some buffer in case we don't fill all the seats on all the days. It's a three-day training. So um, that's kind of the worst-case scenario for what it might cost when we have, if we have more information before we finalize budget, we can um pinpoint that a little more uh specifically if we find we're able to cover more costs with um more registrations than this conservative estimate. Um, we have built in um a team to go to A S C D conference. It's on the East Coast this year. It's a great conference. Um, I realize this is probably a vulnerable addition to the budget, you know, but at this point we we put in, you know, most things that we feel like we would like to do and, and that might be something that has to go. A S C D is a professional organization, association for supervision and curriculum development. And it's uh just a teaching and learning conference basically that we sent teams to that a few other times in the past when it gets close. Last time we went, it was in Boston. Um, I think four years ago. So we try to go when it's close-ish and it's in Washington, so it's close-ish um this year. Um, and then we don't use the uh virtual high school seats anymore. We have students doing early college and other um methods. So we took that out of the budget.
I thought it was like.
Yeah, no, we're not using. No, we're, we're beta, we're old school. Uh, so nothing in system administration of uh specific note other than what you see there. Um, school administration, uh, only two items listed here. Uh, we are having the N E S visit next year, so building in the cost for that. And then A S is um requesting an increase to their admin assist hours to add. Um, currently they have a assistant um at ten hours a week and are requesting to add another ten hours to make it a twenty-hour week position. Transportation, um, you see, uh, you know, for the size of that cost center, it's a pretty big increase. Uh, fuel costs again are up. Um, van drivers were, this is one other thing we're trying to continue um for summer school to provide some um actually, we, we didn't do this last year and we want to try to find a way to do it. Some, it's mainly our high school students. They're coming to the program from a tuition community. We don't have any busing. We'd like to be able to offer some van um you know, a van circuit to do pickup at like, you know, the sending school will have like a hub where we'll go to the Bezy Community School, the Milford School in the island school in Brimbus or, or Lemberg to pick up students depending on who needs rides. And so we'd like to hire a driver this summer to be able to do that with our vans. We also have added in um a line to hopefully add midday transportation for pre-K. Um, Kevin asked some questions early in the year about pre-K and it just got us thinking and talking. And one of the big, um, probably biggest requests around our pre-K other than um, some people wanting full day is if it's not full day, looking for that midday transportation and really seeing that as an equity consideration for us to try to make it as accessible as possible. Um, so this cost you see here is for C R to do that midday run. Um, we've been talking about, you know, might we save money and be wiser to try to do it with our van and then hire a van driver to do, to do that and some other transportation runs. Um, but nonetheless, a placeholder is here for, for that. Um, and then we have a contracted increase built into our uh C R um contract you see there. Any questions on those? This one is pretty um dense with information. Um, I'll just say, first of all, when you, when you look at this, I did um put together some numbers. The utilities and energy cost increases, you may recall that this year we did an offset of some of those increases with the fuel stabilization fund. We added, I looked up today, we added fifty thousand to fuel stabilization this year to try to offset. We had seventy-five thousand dollars in there and we did a, we talked about that. That's right. It's either fifty or seventy-five we added. We thought it was seventy-five. Um, we're going to spend everything that we put in there for sure this year. And, and we, we think we're going to spend seventy-five at least out of that fund this year. Um, and so in next year's budget, we've put everything in costs that we're projecting right now to need. And, you know, then we'll have a conversation about funding it if we want to use fuel stabilization next year at all. Um, but the energy and utility cost increases total a hundred and seventy thousand. So, you know, in my um, i- i- in these numbers, they're, the biggest one is natural gas. Uh, increase of a hundred and eleven thousand, seven fifty. Um, and then the diesel fuel, uh, I didn't, I mentioned that uh in transportation is almost thirty thousand. And then the other two that are in the facilities maintenance are the electricity costs fourteen thousand five hundred and water sewer thirteen five. So, you know, those, those costs are just really um you know, not coming down. Um, so we'll have a conversation about that, but that's a pretty big number when you take those four numbers and get a hundred and seventy thousand. In addition to that, in this cost center, you can see that we're proposing adding an emergency notification system for eight thousand dollars. Um, already talked about those next three. Um, and then we can have some other kind of inflationary costs, maintenance con- contracted um services and contracted costs are going up. Um, some of our maintenance contracts, we're projecting an eighty-seven hundred dollar increase, um grounds maintenance and ninety-six hundred dollar increase. Um, supplies, most of that cost of supplies. Um, Lynn and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, we have to change the filters and buy filters for our new water filtration system and for our um air, air purifiers and, and a lot of that fifteen thousand is that. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Um, PAC is requesting some additional lighting that they've uh identified as needed to augment what was, you know, provided in the um in the, you know, set that we. In the, you know, set that we got when we purchased, when we opened the pack, you'll see that there. Yeah, I I mean, I was surprised at that too and um, you know, I, I think. Melissa wrote me a whole, you know, I haven't, I didn't provide that, I can provide that to you, the whole rationale, but it's, there's. A lot of rationale behind this request and they're really expensive. Well, but we also need additional sound stuff, I mean, that just wasn't a part of the package, yeah. And um. I think it's also your. Some of that is also um packed, some packed supplies like for annual maintenance and, you know, batteries and. Things, it's also in that twelve thousand three hundred because we need, we didn't have a line for that built in with shears budget. Um, the next four lines are some projects that we have built in to um, to do this year. Um, from capital improvement, the twenty thousand, the self-managed projects, twenty seven thousand six hundred, that's a part of our um. Plans, you know, all of our projects that we have planned, like the roof and the. The set that we've talked about with with capital improvement, uh the stairwell cameras, uh that was the other three thousand of that project. Uh, water pump replacement out at the field, we have to add a water pump for things to work properly with the irrigation system at about ten thousand dollars. And then there are several, I think, three or four smaller projects that total around nine thousand that bills identified um our needs. Um. And then we removed the truck because. The truck's been on order for a long time, it's just taking forever to get the truck in that we bought this year, so but we're taking that out of the budget because it's being purchased this year. Um, and then you see our overall debt service is going down at thirty five thousand, so that's a lot of details.
Okay, that last thing you said, I was ready for this, what does that mean?
The debt service?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, there's an amortization table for all of our different um. Bonds that we have, we have, you know, a small, a couple of small bonds and we have the large bond and so over time, they kind of, you know, go up and down. Um, and so, um, you know, we're in a year where we get to pay a little less. It, and the large bond, it goes up one more time and then over the long term of the bond, it goes down gradually over time. Uh, so we're in a down and then we'll go up a little again and then we go down, down, down until that's, you know, just.
With a no mortgage is a constant payment rate, right, a thousand dollars a month, every month. A portion between interest and principal changes, so it's the beginning and principal at the end, that's illegal for a state. For a bond, the principal payment has to be constant, so you basically, if you have sixty payments, you take the amount of money you borrowed, you divide by sixteen, you have to pay that. Every month and the interest is added on top of that, so the net effect is when you borrow money is a district. The amount you owe decreases every month until by the end, you're hardly paying anything. So it's very different from the way a mortgage works.
Yes.
So, like Meredith said, we have one more little hump because we did this weird financing thing to wrap around some other financing. But once we get around that little hump, the actual amount we're paying on the bonds for construction should go down every year. So, I mean, that's, that's the good news.
Then we have these other small, the QAB bonds that were uh like, I don't know, ten years ago or so. That paid for the HVAC renovation that happened some time ago, that also over time is going down, so. So when I looked at um, you know, the five hundred and one thousand was for. At the bottom, you see that's the combined salary and benefit increases projection. I mentioned a hundred seventy thousand is energy utilities um increased um expenses. And then with the things we're bringing up from Esser. It's a hundred and thirty six thousand, so when you look at those three things together. You know, we're up above eight hundred thousand with just those three things. Um, so. I I think that's just important to to see, you know, when it's broken down across the spinning lines, you don't see it as easily. One seventy.
If you add the new positions together, combined with the positions that were extra funded or now we're the budget only got even seventy one.
Yeah, so that's another.
This is probably not a great budget for that.
Yeah. So, you know, that, that really paints the picture of the increase you see um. For the increase of the total proposed budget, either, you know, smaller pieces in there, but those are, those are really the big impacts. Um. And, you know, we take this and then we go over and look at our revenue, so if you're ready to shift your revenue. The other page that looks um similar to that, but it's a. No, a little the orient, different orientation, um, we have the state allocation, uh we talked about the additional seventy seven thousand. The additional required local is listed there at two sixty five and some change. And then Lynn uh has worked on um tuition projections. Um, this is a larger group of uh ninth graders coming from tuition communities in some years, so. If we project or if we calculate what, you know, we've been getting of that group, we project thirty five. Um, incoming ninth graders and you see, she's also looked at, you know, how many are we graduating, how many? You know, do we know that any of them are leaving, all of that, so that is a positive, you know, increase in. Uh, numbers of a hundred and sixty six thousand, um, you know, and is it based on thirty five land or did we go down? Yeah, um, so we uh, we'll refine that number as we learn more, um. I think Lynn feels fairly comfortable with it. Um, I mean, just looking at history, um, you know, it it feels really solid to me, but it's just. Fourteen year olds are hard to predict, right? Thirteen, fourteen year olds are just really hard to predict, right, and we have, you know, a large group coming from Glenburn, but, you know. There can sometimes be a a sway with a couple of kids decide to go one way and a lot of kids follow, so we, it's hard to predict. But this is what, where we think, based on the trends we've seen over time, the percentage that we typically get. From our tuition towns would would yield, that this is a good prediction. Um, special education also is projecting some increases and just trying to capture, you know, as much uh. Billable tuition as possible for the services we're actually providing, there's some increase shown there. Um, interest is, you know, improved athlete about that, is it really improving that much and we're seeing a lot more interest coming in on, you know. The money we have sitting in the bank. Um, but, you know, conversely, um, you know, the, the money we're recovering for the QAB. Um, interest is going down. Because the, the bond's getting smaller, yeah. Um, I do think facility rental might be an area where we under. Projected what might be possible there, but it's still just, we've only rented out the space, I think, once so far this year. So it's just very new for us yet, we also uh rent out the Ace Adams um. Gem for the uh farmer's market, so really that's what is projected there at fifteen hundred and so far for the pack, we just don't have enough known. Revenue to even put anything there yet. Um, last year, we had a strategy of doing some one-time purchases from unassigned because our unassigned fund balance had grown. Right, over COVID, it really grew, we weren't spending as much for some things and we received a lot of COVID relief money that was, you know, being spent. Um, for, for some other things, so we um purchased uh things like the truck and some. Uh, other equipment that we knew were one-time purchases last year to the tune of sixty thousand dollars, so that revenue is out, but the expenditures are also out of the budget. And um, the milty, I mentioned, this is the last year. Of the milty payment, it's smaller this next year, so you see that's uh forty one thousand dollars less. Um, we've projected keeping the same amount, uh eight hundred twenty nine thousand from unassigned to help balance the budget. And with that, it would require an additional five hundred and seventy five thousand dollars in um. Additional local, but you have to add that to the two sixty five at the top, right? So it's both of those numbers together, which we'll see on the, the last sheet. But before, before we go to that last sheet, you have any questions about this one?
I mean, this, uh, the observation that the total revenues seem to ever so slightly exceed the increase in total costs from the previous page. Yeah?
Uh, that's by design. Yeah, we. We made this call, this cell that I just turned yellow, no, sorry. Is the, the one that has to balance things, the four, four million, two thirty six.
Okay.
Yep. So as expenses go down, this cell can go down. Or, you know, sometimes we learn more about tuition, sorry?
And there is something wrong there, though. I think the total is around revenue, because it should match.
Um, oh, the one.
That's not a spreadsheet, so I probably was just typing here or something.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, it's a little bit, it should match, revenue and expenditures will match.
Okay. We have to do that by law.
Yeah.
Makes sense, the five seventy five is something we would have to make.
On, on the next sheet, it is accurate.
Well, we're waiting for just some of the budget to look down, we're basically voting for a tax increase, which changes that number higher that highlighted to make it all. Make it all match up.
The good news is it's in our favor. The, the additional local on the revenue, they should be four two zero four eight seven six.
Is there, is there, is there some man or someone that's like.
Marketing it?
Marketing it, like.
No, we're not marketing it right now, actually.
Yeah.
Uh. Really, this has been the year to get our legs under her, under us and um, we. Tried to accommodate those who come to us and said, you know, can we use the space? Um, and we, we've had one group, the banker, used something, he used it in December.
Yeah.
Um, other than, we've had some other uses, but they aren't paying us, right? In our policy, you know, support uses, use it without cost. Um, but I, I think that's the next step for us, when we get a um auditorium manager in place and they can get their feet under them and get. You know, continue the good work that was started to, you know, have protocols in place, I think that's an opportunity for the next auditorium manager to work on. But it's a quite busy place without renting it out, actually. But there's potential for renting it out, for sure, it's, it's empty a lot on the, on weekends, there could be performances and such happening there. There are some practices sometimes on the weekends, but that.
It is kind of funny to reflect back when we were starting this whole process and people were worried, we don't think that whatever fifty hours of use out of the pack.
Yeah.
Cause we are, I don't know how many hundred hours.
Yeah, I mean, I was just, we were doing auditorium manager interviews today and I looked at the schedule and every day of the week, there's at least three things happening there. This week, so lots of, lots of activity. Um, so this, this is the sheet that kind of summarizes both of those sheets, I just went through them in detail. Um, and it gives, you know, all of those numbers, but this, this number, the increase, decrease adds up. You know, what the increased tax. Um, amount would be if we adopted this expense budget. And uh, and if, you know, tuition stayed the same, nothing else changed, so I think that's an important number to um, to consider. Um, another thing to consider that we've talked about is, you know, food service is doing quite well, is this a year where maybe we would consider. Skipping a year with food service, but the problem with that is you have to add it back in again at some point or. We, you know, defer that to somewhere else in the budget that's needed, knowing that it has to go back to food service the next year. Um, that, that's just something we can consider and think about because they, they do get in trouble for having too much money these days. Just because it's been very revenue positive through COVID, um, and just the way our. Operations have worked, we're less personnel than, than needed, but because that was all we did, you know, we didn't find personnel, so they had a lot of, they have a lot of uh revenue. That's restricted what they can do with their revenue, but how much we fund it is up to us.
So we had a conversation over to go about all the. Is any of that in here?
That's a great question, no, thank you, cause I didn't mention that, um, so Brian and Bill and I have been meeting and talking about that plan and prioritizing it. We have a facilities committee meeting tomorrow night to look at our prioritization. Um, and as you recall, the total amount, and it's changed a little because we've been refining it, it's, you know. I forget where it is now, five point. Four million, is that it is? Five point four million, I think is where the total cost is for our plan. Um, and so we did want to talk about what that means in terms of how much we should be putting toward that. I think we felt like we needed to talk with the facilities committee to get their feedback on the prioritization and pace, but. You know, we talked about last meeting, if we, this is what we know now, right, and. The further we go down in ten years, probably that list grows and changes and if we're going to make a meaningful dent in that. Budget, um, right now, we're funding it at two hundred thousand dollars per year and a hundred thousand of that is from unassigned every year. The other hundred thousand is in the budget every year, so that's currently how we're funding capital improvement, two hundred thousand dollars a year, a hundred in the budget. A hundred from undecided and it's not going to be able to keep pace with needs if we stay at that level.
Well, the top line number is if you have a tenure plan for five million dollars, you could be spending five hundred thousand a year. And that's to keep base pretty close, not, because of the end of tenure, you're gonna have a whole new list, so. There's a three hundred thousand dollar maintenance cap that's not in this budget. So this budget basically covers two.
It covers one hundred thousand, with the other hundred thousand, our strategy has been from unassigned.
That's our base account, basically.
Right, yeah, it's not built into these numbers because it would be coming from the unassigned, you know, the savings account.
Is that, so is that drawing on a side down room?
Is it drawing what?
Drawing on a side down.
It, it, yes, yes. To do a hundred thousand a year, to do any, you know, sometimes we add back in to unassigned, depending on how the year goes.
Yeah.
Um, Lynn doesn't think this is going to be a year that we add back into unassigned, just with inflation costs of, you know, supplies and such.
Right, most years we add back in, we don't spend as much as we think we're going to.
So we've had a strategy lately to spend it down with the milty contract, you know, every year we've spent, um, whatever the milty contract costs. Um, that we didn't put in budget um out of unassigned and this year we, you know, the sixty thousand that we spent. Out of unassigned for the one-time purchases, so, um. I think we will have, um, if we do the hundred thousand next year. At a minimum, I think we'll go down to two million, I think we'll draw down that account by about six hundred and fifty thousand.
For our current budget, we can do an extra eight hundred thousand, looks like over a six percent increase. And it's not enough to keep up with maintenance.
Right.
Right, so if we like maintenance at the current levels, eight hundred thousand is one point three mil tax increase. And if we keep up with maintenance, that takes us up to one point one million, which is uh two point. Which, you know, this is a good time to contextualize. This is what I sent you guys in mail, but I can, I still didn't look that too, but um. You know, a two mil jump, the town has been two mil over a two-year period in recent history. The R S U, we had a one mil jump when we did the bonds, we were advertising as a one point nine and we were able to keep it to one, but the two mil jump would be. The R S U, we had a one mil jump when we did the bonds, we were advertising as a one point nine, and we were able to keep it to one, you know, but the two mil jump would be. Last, sort of this last year, we haven't seen any quotes of that. We're looking at a big jump. And just to very quickly jump back up, we went through this a lot of detail last time, so I have to answer questions, but not to belabor it. As much as the state is running around bragging about how they have an education friendly budget, they increased the required expected mill from seven point one to seven point three. Right, so that's, that rate there is saying we expect the town to pay more of the formula. You know, we we calculate how much you guys minimally have to spend on education, we expect the town to pick up more of that this year. And I was really starting to dig into this, um. You know, the the basic formula, it's much more complicated, because librarians and principals and everybody are split on separate lines, but basic formulas. Number of students divided by the class size times the teacher salary is the state formula. Right, and so our number of students went up. And they they did push up the salary, as near as I can figure out, this is not something they ever bullish, like you're starting to get into deploy it, but um. They have this big thing called the salary matrix. As near as I can tell, they did up salaries by three percent. But that's in a year when inflation was seven and a half percent. Right, and as also in a context of historically, they've been upping salaries by one percent a year when inflation's been two percent, right, so the salary. That they fund us for has just been losing ground like that for a decade, and then just lost five percent in ground last year. Right, and then that's on top of the fact, they played this game, I can't believe they did this. They increased the class size for first through eighth grade from sixteen students to seventeen students.
They went back to pre-pandemic levels.
Yeah, they went back to pre-pandemic, but the net effect of that for us this year is the loss of N F D is basically. You know, or net net is um for our core largest group of teachers, we actually had a decrease in state funding. They increased the teacher salary by three percent, but then they cut a teacher, and then that effect for us is they actually got funded. So I just, I don't know where they get off talking about um. You know, how the education friendly budget, they 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 less than half kept up from inflation, they increased class size requirements. And they increased the town versus state portion on the mill rate. And so this is, this is a big piece of where we don't, you know, we're other thing going on, like uh inflation, you know. The biggest pieces, the state didn't make an effort to keep up with inflation, and we are, you know, having to make an effort to keep up with inflation. But um, yeah, all these pieces are catching up with us, and that's, that's what. That's where you see that story, I wanted you to have that history, right? In particular, I think it's important we get the message out, the R S U has been extremely responsible taxes over the last six years. Right, we had that one mil jump when we brought the bond, and then we were able to bring it back down. And uh, you know, across six years, including a massive construction project, we've gone up less than, of just about a mil. Over six years with uh a massive construction project, we added into that budget. So take the, take the construction project out, and we basically went flat on the mill rate. Not on the revenue received rate, because people's home values have gone up, but on the tax rate, the mill rate, we've been flat. Barring that one mill for their construction for the last six years. So I I think, you know, as we, whatever, wherever we end up in the budget, I have to think, we have to get the message out about how the state didn't cover inflation for us. And we have a long history of being extremely responsible with the money. So, well, it was not us, just whatever, having a party, this is uh. Is we've been very careful with both players and trust in this happening, if you look at how much the budget passes by every year, we have our own trust, but. People aren't gonna be very happy this year, wherever we end up, they're having much we got, so I think we need to make sure we keep the message out there. About our our history, which is basically flat mill rate, except for a one mil increase for the construction. When we advertised it, people voted it was one point nine, so, right, we really even managed to minimize that. You know, and then the town is in blue, they have a different story going on, but um, that's not here and there for us. But the state really, the real bottom line is, we've been really responsible, and the state totally did not step up for inflation this year. I think those were two top line messages, as we try and explain what's going on and why. And the others, it's, it's very, kind of, not important, this is kind of ticking time bomb. Maybe it's a year to take that on, maybe it's not the year to take up that on, that's a forward discussion, but um. Can't believe they're not, they're not giving us for teachers first period, period this year. Um net after inflation, but net before inflation, absolute value decrease.
So typically, at this point, um, you know, you have any further questions, but um, you know, we have, this is the beginning of the road. Of budget. Um and. You know, the, we wait, we ask the board to give us some feedback to help us um, you know, bring back. Information that helps us make decisions about how we're moving forward. So um sometimes you ask us to bring back a list of ideas for reductions, because that's the, you know. Place where we are, sometimes we just hold until something, you know, that we know is coming in the near future. And gives us more information before we do that, so I want to ask where do you think we are this structure?
So I think you guys, but there's additional five hundred seventy five that we need to do.
Sorry?
That I'm confused between the additional eight hundred and the additional four or four seventy.
So you have to add the the additional local, the second to top revenue line. That the state is requiring an additional two hundred sixty five thousand. And and the one at the bottom that we use to balance with expenses. So it's the two sixty five plus the.
That's the five seventy five. Yeah, so the the first bucket is the state says, here's their formula, number of students divided by class size times teacher salary will give you this amount of money. And then they split it up, and um the way they split it up is they say you have to charge your town. Tax mill rate, and last year we had to charge them seven point one, now this year we have to charge the town seven point two nine. And then the state will make up the difference. Right, so the basically comes out of income tax and sales, the state gives us the difference, so that local allocation. Is what by law, no matter how cheap we are, we have to spend, we have to tax the town that much and pay for the minimum education. That's in that state formula. The additional local is the amount that the district chooses to charge above the state required minimum. To deliver the education that our community chooses, right, and um every town, that number is not zero. It it can't be negative by law, but I don't think there's any town in the state of Maine where that's zero. It's maybe a little bit higher in Oregon, because people have higher expectations of Oregon, smaller class sizes, all. Strong co and extra pictures, all those things, but those are the two buckets to turn in the backs. And they bolt down, you know, we provide increases a hundred thousand before we do anything about maintenance. Which, again, so a mill. Is one dollar for a thousand dollars of home value, if we have a home that's ten hundred and twenty thousand, you have a twenty thousand dollar exemption. That's two, one mill is two hundred dollars, so increased taxes on a home that's worth twenty twenty thousand. You know, it was obviously um. Twice that, it's it's four hundred dollar tax increase on a home worth two hundred thousand, that's that's the kind of number we've got, people knows. When it goes up fifteen hundred dollars. Most people don't notice or screen, but when it goes up four hundred dollars, people notice. Um for good reason, when you think about being a member of society.
So what is the mill increase in the state of the thousand?
What's the what?
What's what's the mill increase in the state of the nine thousand?
Uh it would be one point six. But, I mean, five hundred thousand is a mill more or less, it's probably five fifty at this point, so I'm. Kind of doing around, that there's here, it's probably slightly less, but it's probably actually five fifty, if you want to do the math. But just using five hundred, it's one point six.
With that, the mill rate is gonna, is gonna go up a smidge anyway, right, because the states require the point two from the state, you know. The tab is gonna happen regardless.
But, you know, that's a, that's an imaginary number, because that's assuming teacher salaries didn't go up. So, I mean, that's the bottom line, is they make it look like it's us putting it into additional local and. Spending on, you know, fancy education, but the reality is, it should have been in the local, that they've really covered inflation. It was, you know, to the taxpayer, it might not matter that much, but it's moved from a just non-discretionary bucket to a discretionary bucket, by the state's choice to run.
Doesn't seem regardless, you know, there should be some sort of plan to have um a public event. You mentioned the bean supper or something, I don't know, because you're making a pretty compelling case about the number of things that tie our hand, there. Salary increases that are contractual, there is inflation, fuel goes up. It's it's the, the wishlist here is pretty small, we'd like to help out some teachers that are struggling with with young children with behavior issues. Maybe um some security cameras, the the wishlist is pretty short here. Uh most of this has to do with an economy that's less than ideal, to some extent, in the state formula. I can imagine some people would still be annoyed, but if we were asking for a. You know, a million dollar renovation of the library, we need the money, maybe somebody could say, well, that's ridiculous. But it seems to me, I'm a novice still, that most of what Meredith is laying out here is really hard. I mean, there's a couple dollars here and there, but a lot of this is gonna happen whether we want it to or not, natural gas is growing up.
No, I mean, I I always say traditionally, we don't have that much control over the mill rate, that's set by how much the state gives us, what we do have control over is our costs. Right, and so I often try and manage play costs. But um, you know, most of our cost increases, uh salaries and energy. Really, I mean, the only thing that's on the table was the, whatever it was, two hundred and seventy K you said, Mark, and. Keeping us for positions and new positions and. That's the only thing that can even conceivably be on the table, right, we can't, we can't heat the building, we can't mount a salary increases. Um so that's the only thing that's even conceivably on the table, was that hundred and seventy K, which is half a mil out of that one point six mil. Right, one point one is locked in.
And then, you know, a combination of a lot of little things.
Right.
Those little things, not, not that we should worry, they won't add up too much, if you really want to have an impact on those, it's it's those six heater. Asser and fungy, which position, which are any converted, or I think what it was, two positions and.
It's two point seven five new, two point five.
That's pretty much the whole conversation, I mean. I look at the student and staff support, and there's the one-time purchases, and I could talk about taking that out of. Unassigned again, but that's thirty K, right, it's not moving the needle. Um and yeah, we could cut a conference here, or cut a conference there, a little bit to do it, because. That's investment in quality, but um, uh those aren't moving the needle, it's there's, I want to have five or quarter positions. I, but I agree with Kevin, that it's not gonna. These are needs in the school that are really real, this is not shrinking class sizes this year, this is not um. Not adding new programs, this was addressing needs of kids in the schools today that are really desperate needs that are. But frankly, there are needs that get in the way of learning, right, these are preconditions to learning, is to have basic behavioral emotional. Uh stability to be able to learn, so. I agree with Mark, we have to look at every one of those positions, but as I just chomped ahead in my head, I'm really a hard pressed fan of many things, I will call it cut. So as you said, Meredith, moving forward, every budget, every board meeting from from now until the end of April, beginning of May. When we actually have to vote on the final budget, our primary topic is budget discussion. I mean, I think. I don't know, I'm just thinking about that a little bit, for me, the next step would be to pull out the. Positions and, well, I could think of two directions, we could pull out those positions and look at it a little more closely, we could also just. I think maybe more traditionally, we've done this certainly is to just hand it back to admin and say. Uh if you had to cut one hundred thousand, what would that be, if you had to cut two hundred thousand, what would that be? And then we could look at that. And I was, I don't mean that's a, it's a game of chicken, it's like, how far down on this, there we go, to the beginning. So it seemed like a reasonable way to go forward, and those are the right numbers to handle administration, maybe fifty, a hundred and two hundred.
Presumably, they like puzzles.
It's still really early too, I mean, insurance can be huge. Wishing we came one way or the other, so we go up or down.
Insurance probably a Euro issue.
Yeah, well, we can hope, but, yeah, I mean, our money rate is good, but it's all, I'm just worried about, you know, the economy and inflation, how that might be.
I I I hope it is, I'm not, I'm not counting.
Yeah, and even some of our projections, you know, we. We're still waiting on the big winter months for natural gas and. Electric is a little bit behind with our new credits and how that's all gonna play out, so. We still have a lot of information to gather and collect in the week.
So way too early to commit to cuts, I agree, because there's lots of things still changing in the budget, I mean, that's another choice, is we just. Take this information, we're sitting, we wait long. Two weeks from now, or four weeks from now, before we ask the administration to start looking at cuts.
I think we should, I think we should at least ask them to start thinking about what they would cut, I mean, I don't think we have to ask for specific cuts, or even say, come back with a list in two weeks. But I think it's probably would be useful for Meredith and her team to start thinking about, okay, if if we were, if we had to cut. This amount, what would it be, if we had to cut this amount, what would it be? Um recognizing that there's a bunch, you know, we've said a couple different times, you know, there's a bunch of stuff we can't. Cut, and you can't cut the contractually required um increases, and it's a half a million dollars, and we can't. We can hope energy costs, and that's completely out of our control, and also highly imminent, so you know. What we'd be asking them to cut, they know the list is small, we know it's small, here's our land. At least they'll start thinking about it.
Yeah, maybe that's a better, you know, think internally, start with fifteen hundred, two hundred, but not plan to present anything until. You know, four weeks from now, and we can revisit whether that's something we need to discuss in two weeks from now.
I guess for me, I I think, yeah, I think that it's, it seems like from my perspective, like, I don't, I I prefer not to cut any of these things, it seems like. Our our time could be spent fiddling around trying to find something to cut, I feel like our time is like. We better spend potentially finding, figuring out how to settle it, all right, like, and I guess that would be our thing, I would most focus on it more, which is what you're saying. Like how, what is the best way to make this case and make it, make it understand and uh. Move it through, if we're not really gonna change to any, I think, I'd like to. I don't know, it is focused on about how we're doing, how we're.
Yeah, I mean, I do think, we've traditionally not, in the past, we've, you know, put an article in the, or an observer, although it's always very early. We've traditionally been given uh space and, you know, it's got times to explain what was happening, which we don't really, it's not a way. You know, and then anybody who comes to actually vote, the twenty to sixty people who come to the budget meeting, we've traditionally had a good platform to explain to them, but. And I agree, this is a year to do, to think about some creative channels to do explanation.
Maybe we could do a direct mail home that we send out.
Yeah.
Some districts do that.
Yeah.
But, and because like, in some sense, this budget does have cut, right, because we, we're not doing the the maintenance we need to. So like, what we ought to be doing to maintain these structures, we're not doing, so. We can start by thinking we haven't done any cuts, but there's a three hundred thousand dollar a year cut, like already baked into this. Because if we do this for the next five or ten years, stuff will be falling down, right?
Well, it's not really a cut, because we had this for multiple years.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
We've been doing this for twenty years, so.
So in that sense, the budget is insufficient, in some, you know, perspective, right now, before we try to take something out of it. There's something missing.
And it was certainly the case when we went through the the public forums during the bond process, that, you know, there were a number of people who came, realized and said, well, how did this? How do you get to this, right, and that was a big theme of, okay, we got here.
Don't get there again.
Right, yeah, so I I think that's.
If we do this, don't put us in this position, I guess.
Right, and so I think that's an important thing for us to consider, I I I don't necessarily know if that means we have to dump a bunch of money even this year, but we, you know, we. We heard that message, and those were, those are, I've been on the, I don't know how long, you've been on the board now, nine years, ten years, I don't remember. Those are the most highly attended public meetings that I've ever been a part of, since I've been on the board, and that was a pretty big message that came through. Yeah, and and just to say, I don't take it as a given, I think it's a conversation we have to have pretty seriously, that we do spend that three hundred thousand this year. Because I just think, if we don't spend it this year, and we're not gonna spend it next year, we're not gonna spend it the year after that. And it's the same as saying we're going to go right back down the rabbit hole. So I I personally think we have to have a pretty serious conversation about how we have another three hundred thousand on here.
One, one thing I would like to know more about, Brian, I don't know if you are in regular contact with either of our representatives, but there is a. At least a plan being floated.
are in regular contact with either of our representatives, but there is a, at least a plan being voted right now um that would um take, would change the there's a cap on how much fund can go into the grading, like surplus funds and global rating, right? And they're they're looking at changing that allocation. Some of that additional funds over that would be used to, would be diverted to the revolving renovation fund. So I don't know how much of a chance that has happened. I don't know if that would then change, you could use that money for, but I I would be interested to know if you can talk to either of our representatives, if you could raise that issue and see if you could find.
Uh I can try and find out. The revolving renovation will be some for us, it's not going to put a big dent in five million currently could work capped out for another couple of years, partly because it's only going to cover roots and age back from a couple of subset of what we need to do. Middle school's not right, the revolving renovation as currently structured is not going to cover the middle school. So that's a whole nother thing is, right, we would like to see them instead of having the one million and the fifty million, we'd like to see them have a five to ten million dollar program. We can make great new levels for middle school. And right now, what they basically say is let your middle school fall apart until it's so bad, we'll give you fifty million to build a new middle school. And that's just insane. We could probably do a really nice job with the middle school with a nicer building and a better location. If I could then, so I know you've been waiting.
Yeah, do I interrupt that conversation just a little bit? Sorry. Yeah, um I guess it's the kind of back to this this question about like interfacing with the public and like, these board meetings are so poorly attended, like, and we don't get comments, we don't like and you talked about these other meetings where there's like equal amount of attendance. I mean, I guess I'm wondering, is there a forum for us to have something fun and exciting and listen centers with food, like, you know, that like we bring people in and be the people that are going to bring the message out and like have a more engaging conversation with the community that will actually draw, I guess that's the to get the big attendance. Right now.
Right, I mean, yeah, having the offering chili and just a chance to get together with your neighbors in the middle of February was part of the turnout, but certainly it was the whether you were, you know, wanting the construction or opposed to the taxes, but it was the fact that there was a big, that items part of the turnout too. I do wonder, I don't, so, we could do a chili supper, but I don't think we're going to draw two hundred people to a discussion of the budget like we did for the discussion come. On the other hand, we do have these other things running around, like the AI communication and stuff. We're still not going to draw two hundred people, but I wonder thinking about having some sort of event uh later in the school year, or kind of like chili supper or
Like a speaker.
Dinner, yeah, maybe a speaker, and then we could do a little bit of work with the DEI with a larger community than we usually draw together. We could do a little work with the budget with a larger community, usually draw it together. Um I just feel like there's a couple of items that we could we're not going to get two hundred, we're not going to get people who have no connection to the schools for the most part, but uh we might be able to gather people together. Right, strategic plans and other things, I mean, it's getting off and down, so.
Maybe drive like my ten hangers or whatever, but we'll stay, we'll still have a conversation, it's a public conversation.
Well, that's another option. I I think we should consider that seriously, inviting our state, our state senator to uh meet with the school board. And, you know, playing that for the budget, but it's still in flux. So we ought to be communicating to them that we are looking at the numbers and they're not matching up with what's uh being put out in the news and that they're basically going to be creating a two mil tax increase under citizens.
There are an increasing number of of voices of complaint, right? And so those those complaints coming from school administrators and if they're coming to your school board chairs to reach the legislators and then the legislators talking to themselves and normally you don't see a big change between what is proposed and what comes out in the end with the sausage making in April or May. And this might be a situation where, given the current majorities in both chambers along with the governor, he does not want to be seen as um anything less than fully supported with
She just cut the teacher salaries. Nobody's saying it, but she just cut the teacher salaries.
And so if that, if that starts to become part of the conversation, then maybe things might change because she regularly talks, you know, with me, you know, my administration, the first one, the United States, state meaning that it is um funding. And so I'm I'm not overly optimistic that anything's going to change, but I I think that there's a better chance that this this cycle might produce change than than a normal or or normal setting.
Especially as you say, because it's not just two controls, I'll just put their flush for money this year, and it's going to go somewhere.
There's lots, and that's why I think this can be useful to know what the status is on these different plans about where this money could go. Because the rainy day fund can't get any bigger, right? Um the money's got to go somewhere. We know where certain people want that money to go, but there are there's a lot of work around right now. So I'd like to know where, what are the, what are the ideas of legislators or what that may do, in particular legislative leaders? Do they have some ideas of what they'd like to see? And have they broached these possibilities with the governors?
And the other option too is to get a meeting like Dr. Work Media and I was writing, writing up a story and
They could also consider a letter to the editor, which is signed by the school board, will pretty good chance to get it published.
I feel like a direct mailing to the citizens of Borno gets us further with our actual because I mean the leadership of
Well, I mean, to me, the letter to the editor would be to our representative.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But once there's a letter to the editor in the V D N, they're going to pay attention to that. I I agree, I I think we should do a mailing this year because that's how we're going to care about our community, maybe with supper on top, maybe with expert with supper. On top of it.
We're going to get people to be proud of the supper event, those who should know.
Right.
We all do.
So let's not do that.
A lot of mill taxes.
I think the, I think the mailing is the, I think Meredith, I need the mailing. Now that you could enroll something like that in some of the other events, but I think the mailing is definitely going to go on. Yeah, because it allows you to lay out the case, explain what's going on and and in a way that people can read and then digest the little details. And that and that, it's the most economical way to reach the largest number of people. It doesn't mean that we're but I mean, we're not going to get I mean, we didn't, we got what, a hundred people for a possible twenty million dollar construction project, you know, it's a lot big, but um it's still not that many. We got around a hundred, and there was some possible thought there was going to be a road built from somewhere, and people are up on it, you know, and then that category isn't big deal, it was still a hundred. Um so you're not going to get that, but chili's great.
Hey, we're going to direct the road by that, so we'll get people to show up.
Right now, just somebody, somebody probably just clicked on him right now. You and I say something about a road and it's like a lot.
I know the ones that are already current.
A small handful of the right people know that are influencing your neighbor. How they, then the ability to have that dialogue back and forth. I think it's important.
Yeah, I I agree. I mean, a hundred has got a multiplier on top of it, so I don't think it's either or. I think we should definitely do a mailing. I think we should at least explore the dinner. I also, Mark, what do you think is the most effective way to lobby our reps?
I think direct, I mean, and kind of direct reach out, whether it's from you on behalf of the entire board, or maybe set something up with Meredith or with the board as a whole, and I think that they would hopefully open to something like that. I think that's definitely the most effective way to do it. And then the next question for after that is if we talk to them, what's the best way for us to them? If they're sympathetic or or the case we're trying to make, what would be the best way for us to help them? Be more effective once they get down, back into the vessel, try and move their colleagues and negotiations with the administration. And I do again, I don't I don't want to be super optimistic, right? I mean, the chances are still high, so I think, I think there's a better chance than I'm on a budget, you do things can issue, and then we're going to weigh the numbers. Because I do, I do not think that the administration would want to be talked about doing the things that you, that clearly they know, right? That's not the perception they want.
No, I mean, you know, they go out and they say, we increased funding by close forty four million dollars. I I've had that pushed back to me from people.
She's she's made the last five plus years making the case that her administration is the most education friendly administration.
But when you increase the salary of the formula by three percent and then inflation is seven point five, and then you change class size backwards, you you're cutting teacher salaries or you're else making us raise property taxes to not cut teacher salaries, so.
That's that's the kind of stuff that is so far down the needs that you can get away with and that's uneducational.
Right, it seems, yeah, I mean, it seems like there's the two, there's getting a a rep to be the champion of it privately and have them carry that authority, and there is a potential for making that the public talking points on main public area or something like that, that message to subjugate growth and allowing the state representatives to take that as kind of new part. So I think there's sort of two potential parts, they if you want to try to
Yeah, that's why I think, not because it's very charred community, but it could be the editorial will get some attention too. Right, it's not quite Portland Presser, but it's I think second or third biggest paper that's showing up and out that they just So, all right, so we talked about, and that's the jam, which I think is a part of the story this year. Let's let's come back to the uh maintenance. I kind of put out a proposition that the baddest things are if we don't get serious about maintenance this year, we're basically never going to get serious about maintenance, and I'm quite curious to hear what other people think.
The problem with not doing this year is in theory, we got the government, they got the law system, and I don't I'm like a little more optimistic, but I don't think things are going to be any better at this time of the year. And Mark's right, the message was pretty clear, hey, you know, you guys let it get to this position, or or the board in general, the past, here's a lot of it's this position. You know, that was almost a precondition of people going along with this. I'm not just going to let it happen again.
Yep. And on a certain level, we do have a case. When they pass the bond, we call them, it's going to cost one point nine mil, it only costs a mil. And now we're putting in another point six mil to take care of the maintenance, so it never happens again, right? It's still at one point six mil, it's less than one point nine. I mean, I know people's memories aren't that long, we're going to have to remind them that most people won't remember, but but on a certain level, there is a case we made, right, that this is just a continuation and not an increase of what was, you know, already discussed.
Not cynical, but if this is the year we're putting a lot into messaging, like, maybe this is the year to put a lot in.
I kind of share that perspective. In my experience, I'd rather take the hit on taxes once than spread it over over two or three years and decade it. You know, it's not just about how thick my skin is and taking hits, it's just about, I think everybody likes certainty, right? Businesses want certainty, homeowners want certainty under taxes, so I'd rather just be upfront and have the whole bad news once. And have a reasonable, we don't have total control as we're seeing, but have a reasonable expectation that it's not going to happen for years in a row. I think there's a bit of a story to you know, tell the truth, get it out there, it is what it is, let's um you know, have a reasonable hope that it's not going to come back next year and year after. All right, so it sounds like from what I'm hearing, we at least have to be keeping the conversation going, but the
And we'll start working on you know, developing ideas, and I think it would be good to let um this give a little more time in two weeks for us to bring back that information to you, and hopefully the picture will become clearer in other ways um around some of the things that are you know, can still change. I don't think we'll have our insurance numbers by then, but that will be until I
I mean, just to be clear for everybody on the board, it's too early to go out and start talking about specific more, it's because there's a lot that can still change, I think. Talking about the general picture that it's looking bad and the reasons why it's looking bad, I would not state not mentioning inflation um and the maintenance are things that we could start talking about now, but I would not start quoting mill rates because there's a lot of stuff still in flux.
We get our um anthem rate, final rate on April seventh and our April eleventh meeting. Follows that, we get our max rate. So they give us a max rate first, like this is the highest anyone's rate will be in the state. Does it stay with you? Yeah. And then they give us our final rate next. So the max rate comes out on March twenty eight or by March twenty eight. So that's two meetings away. So we'll know if there's potential down adjustment then. So I think
Realistically, the difference between ten percent and zero percent, which is a best case is what, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
I can't remember. It's a big number. It's at least a hundred, I I I could do it today, which is
I mean, it's it's certainly real money, but it's
Could put a big dent in an additional three hundred for capital improvements.
Yes, that's true.
So that would go there in terms of
And then you get a few extra students, you know, where we decide to come. It starts to
We haven't even had registrations started yet. That's just, that was just solely based on the number of eighth graders out there and the percent that we typically get. Um but like you said, it can really vary. They follow a whole group, we could get a percentage to be way lower or way higher, so.
Yeah.
We don't, I don't even, and I don't know a lot of the this group of kids, some of them, you know, and have siblings, and you kind of know who's going to go where, but there are a lot of this group, so. This was a, you know, good start. Thank you for the time. We'll circle back next meeting a bit to update you if we have any updates, and certainly, if you have thoughts, we'll put an agenda item there as per some discussion. The plan to bring back ideas. Um I also put the documents in the more folder, so you have a copy of those.
Okay, anything else on budget for now? It definitely is a, I know it's a Samara Don, it's not a sprint. So we have like four more budget meetings to talk about it, but um any other thoughts for now? Okay, move on to the school calendar. This is the discussion meeting, right?
Correct.
Typically do that place.
Yes, this is just the first reading of the budget and um it is very similar to this year's calendar. In fact, I, you know, they're really, I think one of, one of the changes in this year's calendar and last year's calendar, or next year's predicted calendar this year is the start of school got kind of worked better with the way the days fall. Um and it's preferred, and staff was really happy to see this comeback as a potential where we're able to start with a three day student week, and then the next week is a four day stu, the next week is four days with the Labor Day holiday and then five days, and I think that works well for students to ease ease into the school year um and and certainly staff uh as well. So that's kind of just based on how the days fell, it worked out to do that. Um and I'd say the only other changes, we did um sacrifice a day in December that we had hoped to have as an additional um day off there um to align with the regional calendar. Um we we do have that Friday as a teacher's only day, but it's actually the the trade out comp day for parent conferences, so staff won't be working that day. Um and so the last day there would would be the twenty first. Um we did align with R C twenty two, they um moved to our January workday um in another, you know, U T C kind of um trying to help that regional calendar situation, so we didn't have to change that day. Um I don't think there's anything else changed. We built in the same number of storm days as we have this year. Um you know, my new goal with calendars to finish by June team. Um, you know, my new goal with calendars to finish by Juneteenth, so that it doesn't get complicated with that. And Juneteenth next year, interestingly, is I think went on a Wednesday, the nineteenth, so pretty, pretty, um, far away from that. So, um, you have any? You guys, the number of early release days is the same we're sticking with, kind of on a, um, fixed schedule of the second Wednesday of each month.
January, I think we're breaking one week, that's what it always is.
Pretty short.
We can change depending, yeah.
I mean, I know, I know Mark will say something, isn't it? And so I think this is probably what the administrators and teachers want, and that's, that's, that's fine. It, it always sucks as a parent. But there's no way to make everybody happy, right? So.
Which, which part?
I'm just gonna whine, this is not material. But you know, the Fridays and the earlier these Wednesdays and the, they're all, they all conspire, they're the, 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 the last week of August is always challenging to figure out what to do with your kids for a couple of days, um, when you're working. I'm not pushing for change, I'm just whining. Like the twenty eighth and the twenty ninth, you know, where the kids aren't in school. The people are working or the semester has started, um, or any of those things. It's, it's always challenging to find childcare solutions because there usually is week long camps during the summer. But those, there are these, there are those gaps where what do you do for that Monday on Tuesday?
Yeah, I mean, we, um, have a hundred and seventy five days in our year, so, um, it is, it has worked well to have the three day and then the four day and then, you know, five day start for, um, we find particularly like our youngest learners, it's really helpful to have them easing into, you know, coming to school five days a week after having been away for the summer. So really works well with them and staff says it really helps them build their stamina as well, do it that way. So I get it though.
Just whining. I feel like those interruptions break there, like it's hard for me to come back.
And I agree that Wednesday is a hard.
Yeah. Well, the addition of, um, the program at A S A has been a really huge help. And the fact that they've run that on Wednesdays this year, uh, for the early release days is really the great help. I'm really pleased that that program has been so successful, really, um, lucky to have that back in place because there were a number of years that it wasn't available.
And the flip side, now that I get you out of school, I can argue the flip side.
You get no space for speaking.
Is, uh, I think it's easy for people in most other professions to realize, not understand, just have little time, teachers have to, um, do the deep thinking, talk to each other, do the learning that they need to do, right? Most jobs, again, you know, some of those are faculty that are tied to some teaching during the week, but not as many hours. Most jobs, it's just a given that, oh, you go to a meeting and you have an interaction around this topic that you're trying to implement across your company, or you go to a meeting and you have an outside trainer or you spend a week and they buy you some work for training and, uh, for teachers, they don't get that. They have that, you know, they have the one prep period, um, or, you know, a little bit of variability there, but they have a prep period and that's really honestly just keep their sanity about keeping in help of students who need help and, uh, homeworks and getting assignments for the next day put together. And then that, that time that we take for granted in almost every other profession to meet with each other, talk with each other, learn, develop, solve problems, move the company in new directions does not exist in a teacher's day that's got kids in the classroom, six hours. And so the challenge is to find that, uh, some of its professional developments, some of it's time to go to conferences, it's some of it's time to have staff meetings where you're trying to implement a change, solve a problem as a building. That time is just doesn't exist in the normal teacher's, teacher's schedule. So really the only other choice is to have more, you know, P D days, which I don't know if that's better or worse for parents and it's also got a cost implication.
As opposed to.
Full days, right?
Or, or, I mean, I guess the alternative seems like Friday early sheets, like, which I guess it's harder to get teachers to. I mean, for parents, it, you know, it makes it a little better. Also, I mean, I think, you know, coming again, sort of all our model that I started you know, about, you know, it's all about daily rhythms and keeping these rhythms and still going four days in a rhythm for kids. It's like, oh, and I, you know, you break that rhythm with the whole of the week, you have two days instead of their rhythm, two days and just, I don't know, it seems to me like it would be better for kids and families to have four days of rhythm and then they have to on these weeks that you can then take two and have to. But I understand that it's hard to get teachers.
But it's tempting for teachers to think that is a.
Right.
But more, I think more problematic is when you're trying to do deep thinking, it's Friday afternoon, really the best time to ask your staff to do their deep thinking.
Yeah, I think, you know, we, we've talked about that for the very reason you mentioned, like, that I think Friday would work better for families, but I don't think it works better for accomplishing the goals of professional development we have for, you know, the whole reason we have those days. So. And, and we used to be, try to be more strategic in placing them. And then there was feedback that it would probably be better to keep it consistent. So families weren't surprised. Um, where if it's always the same day of the month, it feels more predictable and people aren't caught off guard by it, even though it's on a calendar, like, you know, you just, you don't always have this in the forefront of your life.
That's true. I actually, I, this was the second or third year, well, my kids have been only in A S A for four years. I own the Wednesday rhythm though. I am, I am, uh, I do look carefully towards Wednesdays. And so you have trained me. If you had a Thursday one, I would be completely surprised. But, uh, Wednesday, I, I start looking at my calendar, the month changes. So we're in March here tomorrow, I'll start looking for that next Wednesday. It was working.
Good, yeah.
I think it looks good. We have less degrees of freedom than it feels like we have. When we think about a hundred and seventy five days, think about having to line up with the U T C calendar, thinking about having to have a certain and minimal amount of time for staff development and training.
And I feel like we, you know, just make great use of that time, really, you know, have, have been pretty strategic about trying to maximize now that we're kind of trying to move forward in post pandemic phase, um, curriculum work and a lot of other, you know, D E I training initiatives and, um, technology training and, uh, just, you know, you've seen the list that Susan has shown, shown everyone. Um, there's no shortage of topics to, that need to be given time.
Just for, um, reminder saying, how many districts send the U T C? Cause that's how many districts we are courting, you know?
Yes, I think it's, um, six high schools.
I mean, we don't have as much control of the calendar as we'd like to think.
Right.
It's the reality and situation.
Yeah.
Because those six high schools cannot be more than five days out of alignment, all separate.
I mean, just to follow up on what you were saying, Meredith, you know, I think Susan's done a good job this year, which I've appreciated of recording back what's happening during those P D times. So I just, you know, much as the Wednesday afternoons are scrambles, I hope we also listen to what's happening during those Wednesday afternoons, right? I think it's easy to think, oh, it's just, you know, going south on features, but there's, there's a lot of stuff that's happening during that time and there is literally no other dialogue and stuff can happen.
I keep looking at Mark's.
Huh?
You keep looking at Mark's.
I can't even see Mark. Uh, Mark, Mark's hopeless, I'm not gonna commit to Mark. Yes, I'm looking to the whole side of the room, it's got younger kids, I know.
Like the snow days and stuff for.
Yeah, we build in four into the calendar. And so our last day of June thirteenth has four snow days built in. If we use all of them, then that's our day. If we add more, if we use, you know, more than four, then we have to push the school year and further down the road. Use less, we're able to pull it earlier.
Where are we right now? We use two?
Two.
We have a non canceling super event.
Yeah, I got transferred in last time. We have a delayed start, it doesn't count.
Right.
So I mean, that's a piece of the background is as long as you get in half the day of school, it counts towards the hundred and seventy five.
Right.
So that's where the delayed starts come in, but that's also where those two hour early releases come in is they still count towards the one seventy five. But if you look at those green days, those don't count towards the one seventy five.
The green.
The full days.
And you're saying you like to end before June twelve, because?
Well, just because, you know, it's another holiday that pushes the year further and complicates, you know, staff.
It's always right at the end of the year. So you'd either be at the place of, we're going to take a one day break and then bring the kids back to the last two days before school was out, which seems like an insane idea. Well, we don't celebrate Juneteenth day, which doesn't seem like a good idea. So it's.
Well, it's a required state holiday.
Yeah, we pressure that we should be on calendar.
Put together.
It is, but it's gonna finish.
You're not worried.
Fair enough to be out plowing yourself.
Max, we might have a delay, but that's. We'll see, I don't think.
Okay, anything else on calendar? This is just the discussion if there's any substantial board feedback and then we'll see it again for your final vote. Okay, hiring recommendations. I would make a motion to approve the code curricular slate as presented. Is there a second?
And second?
Uh, disagree very quickly. Also Saunders, middle school drama, uh, Elaine Bard, middle school drama, spring play. Uh, John Holly. Uh, I'm sorry, Elaine Bard is the high school spring play. John Holly is also drama, high school spring play. Don Joseph High School, all the rest is high school, uh, Don. Joseph, varsity baseball, Shane Graham, J V by his fault, Kristen Esplin, varsity softball. Alyssa Kubash, J V softball, Todd Hillier, varsity assistant softball, Zadik Arnold and Sarah Tibbetts tennis. Zach Arnold, Sarah Tibbetts, J V tennis. Uh, Crystal Bell, assistant tennis coach, Jeff Owen, canoe team, Chris Lidd, varsity track. Also assistant track coach is Steve Dexter, Lynn White and Brandon Crocker. Any discussions or questions? Go ahead and vote. All those in favor? Passes five to zero. Next up is new course requests. I'm just gonna take a flyer and I'm gonna make a motion to approve, uh, but we can come back and separate something out if we want, but I'm gonna take a flyer since Blake approved, uh, all twelve course, uh, new courses as recommended. Is there a second? Discussion on anything anybody want to move out? Just for the process, this did go through the curriculum committee, right? They looked at thirteen courses, one course based on some feedback that we're revisiting, which can come back at a later date, but, um, the other twelve all got the thumbs up from the curriculum committee. So there has been a process, uh, you guys all got to see the, I think it's, I think all of these are great. And I'm glad to see us diving deeper into help for high school students. We keep talking about social emotional, there's, you know, there's a support piece, but there's a curriculum piece to that, uh, and that's really what they're bringing back. We're looking at the board goal of working to challenge all students with some of these classes. We're providing fun new offerings. It's really impressive, um. People say this all the time, but when we have a school of four hundred students, have an A D and fun English offerings and things we offer. So I'm, I'm excited to see all these, any other questions or comments? Okay, vote. All those in favor? Passes five to zero. Uh, subcommittee reports, policy subcommittee is meeting this, uh, Thursday. We have a policy on gate receipts, uh, trying to bring the pack and the sports fields into alignment and how gate receipts are treated. Uh, policy D, if memory serves, maybe it's D V, uh, and then we're continuing with the J policies. Anything for U T C?
Yeah, I missed the meeting. There's one this Thursday, so I'll report my next time.
All right, Spurs?
Yeah, we do have one this Thursday.
Curriculum Subcommittee, you're seeing the main output. Uh, I guess we don't have another board meeting. The next, uh, meeting would be the second Thursday. Facilities, there were a couple of quick updates, um. I don't know, but you all have followed this, but we've been going back and forth with Bowman on the last little items. The football field and tracking, the biggest last little item, not so little, but, uh, the next biggest one being that they installed H back for the whole pack center, which would ban room, choir room, those little, uh, music study rooms with a single thermostat. And we've been back and forth and back and forth with, um, whose fault that is, uh, cause if you go into the drawings, they put thermostats in each room. But somehow Bowman put in a, a machine that only has one control.
They put in the drawings, but didn't write it in the specs.
They didn't write it in the specs. And so now Bowman is claiming, well, it was in the specs, we don't have to say for it. The bottom line is we're sort of splitting the cost with the architect and that makes both Meredith and I pretty upset because if there's one thing, it's not our fault, is the failure to spec that out. But it's the best, we've been working this for almost, it was like a year. And it's like the best that we're gonna get. So.
We got attorney counsel, justice and just. And, uh, it's gonna cost us sixteen thousand.
What's that?
Which room is?
This is the performing.
I'm not sure where the thermostat.
It's not in enough rooms, we know that. Probably in the bathroom or somewhere completely irrelevant.
Is it gonna be a thermostat every room or just?
Yeah, every room's gonna be.
Yeah, it's, basically, some of the, um, contractors reduce their overhead, their normal rates to kick in some to help with the cost. And so they're doing some in kind, I guess, contribution to the cost. C H A is covering ten thousand or so.
Yeah. The other thing going on, as you all know, we had a contract on S R F and S R funds to redo, uh, some H back down the first step and grade wing at A S A. It was about six hundred and fifty thousand. We got feedback from the lawyer that, uh, the guidance on S R funds has changed, that it needs to be uh, ideally competitively bid or in our case at a minimum, get a, uh, independent, uh, bid, second, cost estimate. We did that, it came in for half of what Honeywall was telling us it's gonna cost. Which could be good news, but maybe, you know, we're, we're sorting that out right now. Meredith and I have a meeting tomorrow with, um, uh, a third party, the architect we're working with on some of our other projects to serve as a kind of neutral piece of advice between the cost estimator and Honeywell, what we're trying to sort it out. But, um, I guess, you know, maybe we'll save a lot of money, a couple hundred thousand, maybe we won't there. And maybe this project gets pushed back a year until summer of twenty twenty four because of this. But clearly, if we can save a couple hundred thousand, we want to sort it out. So we're doing that right now. Anything else with, and facilities?
You certainly boiled down that to simple as for, I feel like it's, yeah.
Oh, I know, there's contracts and lawyers and multiple bid documents and multiple conversations with Honeywell. Yeah, it's, uh, so this committee meeting is meeting tomorrow to go through this, uh, five million plus. The next step is we try to prioritize things like, and so, which will help us start to think about pacing a little more to get so this committee to be back where we're in that report. Um. Wellness committee, anything there?
Uh, we haven't met, I mean, there's in the background, we're still, they're outdoor learning objectives, we're like, went out to our classroom, we're still kind of poking down, trying to get them uh, give us, um, for that space. Um, and then uh, I guess there's the middle school garden is gonna be starting seeds down in the A S A greenhouse.
I know there's a big update on V I leadership team, the five subcommittees are continuing to meet at various points and think sometime towards the end of March, the, uh, five subcommittees will come back together to the leadership team again. All of you, more of an update then.
Other than the, the big P D day, another big.
Right.
Which was professional development, this is gonna change from our team.
Yeah, a lot of teachers just want information about, we're like, okay, we, we need to be aware of this, give us some information we can hear. So uh, P D is really stepping up on that. Takes me back to the source of that, but I was, I was admittedly whining. No, I totally get it. My kids went to the schools, they totally get it, but, um, any other business? Any requests for future agenda items? Any requests for future agenda items?
Yeah, just a question about the next meeting.
I was gonna do that under the next meeting announcement, second, yeah. Uh, any public comment? Seeing none, and lots of tired administrators. Um, next board meeting is two weeks from today. It's looking like both myself and Noah are going to be gone. They can go ahead with three people. Um, but I don't know, I guess it's kind of a board superintendent discussion whether that. Is something you wanna have happen or.
Gone and available remotely or gone.
I'm probably gone, I'm gonna be six hours ahead and in the field with question, poss- possibly with uh wifi, but quite possibly without wifi. And I think Noah indicated he was gonna be gone, gone too. The, yeah, I, I have called in from Europe many times before and until two o'clock, but with the wifi thing, I don't think I can commit to that this time. So I don't know what the. On the other hand, the budget discussion does need to be moving forward, but I don't have a strong opinion. I know that there's a huge, other than budget, certainly the calendar could come back at the end of March.
And we're probably need policies, but those could wait.
Yeah. I mean, we have an organizational meeting right after the election, we have the election of officers and committee representation, but that's the night of the fourteenth, so we can't do that. Organizational meeting on the fourteenth, that's gonna have to be on the twenty eighth. Already, so you're right, other than budget, I'm not sure there's a big uh agenda.
I mean, maybe we cancel it.
I, if we don't think that there's any need for it, and I think that's really. You know, you and Eric know all about what's gonna be on these agendas and the rest of the stuff. If you don't think there's gonna be need for it, we can just cancel it. Um, if you think there's a need for that additional meeting. Now, you could look to do the twenty first, and that would be a back to back twenty first, twenty eighth.
Yeah, well, let's, let's tentatively leave it on the, you know, leave it on people's calendars, but it seems like there's at least a fifty fifty chance we could answer it closer to.
Maybe then if there's something that ends up needing to be done, that. You know, we need a meeting for, right, three of us just come and do it, and we, we defer like any room for budget discussion or anything else until. People is able to get back together.
You know, if there's any teacher hires coming.
Now, the only thing I'm wondering about is if we decide that, that we do wanna move forward with Honeywell and, and we have to do some kind of different vote.
Right.
That, that might be the only thing that, that I'm not sure.
Let's just leave it for now, then you can decide, it, does there need to be some reason to have meetings, if it's something to do down, and then if not. Cancel that and the next decision is, do we make it over the twenty first or we just go to the.
Yeah, I mean, it may just make the twenty eight longer, but that could still be a win to have one long meeting instead of two meetings, so.
The fact that we're gonna be out of here before eight thirty in, end of February meeting is, is somewhat a.
Yeah, it's true.
I'm, I'm not gonna.
All right, so we'll, we'll play it by year, but heads up, that one may get canceled. Any requests for information or follow up?
We are going to at some point. Return with that scheduled discussion. Summary of how this schedule changes will.
Right, yeah, we're doing some data collection right now.
Any other requests for information or call? All right, at this point, we're gonna go into an executive session. Uh, we will not take any votes except adjournment afterwards, so. Anybody who wants to uh should cut out um and join the executive session, we're just gonna vote to adjourn when we come out, so. I would make a good motion to go into executive session under one M R S A four oh five six E in labor negotiations. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, we're going into executive session, take a quick bio break and give everybody a chance to get out, if anyone. Have a good evening, everyone. Thanks for hanging in, everybody.